Take the roll call. Jerry?
Present.
Mike?
Present.
Todd?
Present.
Ms. Shirley?
Present.
And Marcus?
I'm here.
Okay, all present and accounted for. Uh, Ms. Queen, would you take the staff?
Absolutely. We have, uh, Mr. Ray Allen. Attorney Walter. Attorney Walter? Okay. Uh, Jim Wadwitz. Carrie Warner. I know Jim's watching, uh, he is online. Carrie Warner?
Present.
Adam?
Present.
Todd Hunsinger?
Present.
Brandy Deese?
Present.
Hayden Kramer?
Present.
Abby Ball? Abby is present.
Yeah.
Alicia Massey?
Present.
And, uh, Gary Evans? All right, Abby, are you present? Okay, I, I know she's there. Um, we do have, uh, three guests with Land Design also, um, which I will let Brandy introduce. I believe there's three, and Brandy will introduce when we begin now.
All right, go ahead and we'll, um, we'll do that first.
Brandy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the previous development that we discussed at the June ninth meeting. It's a forty-one acre parcel off of Potter Road, uh, currently Zoned SF one in Union County. So this project would be, um, attempting to annex into the town. And we have with us, um, our representatives from Land Design, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Grayson. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Brandy. Uh, guys, thank you for, uh, listening to us again. Um, I think we, we went back and huddled and kind of regrouped based on your initial comments of, uh, lot size, concerns, uh, density, um, and kind of the surrounding areas in similarity to lot size, uh, and developments in general. Kind of on a, a general look, when we went back, we analyzed to going up to a, like a ten thousand square foot lot, um, based on what we were initially, um, asking for, obviously, is the SF five. Um, but based on the Union County Comp Plan, um, we actually fall into that mixed use area, which, uh, for Union County allows patio homes, small lots, uh, you know, single-family detached, attached, um, and obviously a, a higher density, uh, for typical, uh, use on that. So that was our approach, obviously, coming into asking for the SF five and thinking of that nature. Uh, mainly only, uh, because going from, I believe, concerns prior to it were, you know, going from an R forty down to an SF five was a big um, but looking at the surrounding areas, this is what our kind of presentation is going to try to depict visually for you guys of what an actual eight thousand square foot lot looks like, how far, uh, away we already have existing, um, lots that are at eight thousand or less, uh, within Indian Trail. Uh, just to give you an idea of really what it looks like and what that product ends up being when it's all said and done. Um, you know, obviously, our concerns, you know, and the town's concerns should be, you know, one acre lots, half acre lots, you know, those things, the low density, it, it, over time, it's going to cause, you know, it's not going to sustain taxes. You know, it's going to be difficult, you know, moving forward, um, with with those types of developments, and if that's what we stick with, um, you know, you can't sustain the, you know, eighteen and a half rate that you currently have. It's, it's going to be really difficult for people to take that on. Um, you know, and obviously, low density really curtails the commercial use and, uh, potential that, uh, businesses will come into the area. Um, obviously, if they're doing their studies, they're not fitting, uh, that into their market, that there's not enough With that being said, we can get into the visuals of
Hold on one second. Hold on a second. Somebody, somebody needs to mute. There's a lot of noise coming in.
Do we have the hand raise option, uh, Mayor Alvarez? That we can just mute everyone?
I don't, I don't, on my phone.
Can we mute everyone just while we do through the presentation? We'll unmute for comments and questions. Abby, can we do that, please? If she
We good?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll let, uh, I'll let Mark, uh, with Land Design as well, uh, kind of go through what we've, uh, got here to depict for you guys.
So, uh, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Um, this is a similar sidewalk from our previous, um, presentation, just for orientation purposes. Um, our site's located in the middle. What we had done was go through and, as Mason had talked about, highlighted similar developments that are probably within half miles, a mile radius of this site. Um, and we just drilled down, took a look at some of the similar lots, uh, products, whether they've been approved recently, approved a couple of years ago, and go to the next slide. Uh, we looked at these, um, these seven, uh, or these six different subdivisions here, Brookhaven, just the northwest, Prestwick, uh, Colton Ridge, Brandon Oaks. We also looked at the Village Indian Trail as well as the, um, I think it's Walden, that's Austin Village, uh, which that area hasn't been updated yet, and then just did a couple takeoffs just to show, um, we're proposing sixteen, seventy foot lots with this subdivision at a minimum of eight thousand square feet. And what we were finding, you'll find the subsequent sizes, that was fairly consistent with a lot of recent development in the area. Next slide. Uh, we can skip this one, I'm sorry. Uh, so this is Brandon Oaks, um, and we weren't trying to go find the smallest lot, we were trying to find something fairly typical, um, nothing that was on a cul-de-sac, but, you know, your standard lot size is there. We found a lot of stuff within the sixty to seventy foot range, uh, average depth's about one twenty-five to one thirty, really shook out to right around eight thousand square feet, which is very similar to what we are proposing within this subdivision. This is a small house pad on that lot, you can see the one next door, it's fairly large, but since we're looking at an eighteen hundred foot product, um, we feel it's very consistent with this, with this neighborhood. Uh, next slide. Prestwick, um, same thing here, sixty by a hundred and five feet, this is actually a sixty-three hundred square foot lot with a fairly sizable house pad really wedged onto there. Um, so we're looking to come in about two thousand square feet larger than this subdivision. Uh, next slide. Uh, Brookhaven, again, this is fairly consistent. Um, sixty-eight foot wide lots, hundred and thirty foot pad depth, house pads twenty-five hundred feet, and this, this is just the house pad. This is not even considering a second level, so the product that we're looking at's a little bit smaller than that, at the eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred square foot. Next slide. Colton Ridge, um, another eight thousand square foot lot, this has got a three thousand square foot house pad on it, seventy feet, just over seventy feet by about a hundred and ten feet deep. And I think I got one more. This is, yeah, excuse me, the Village of Indian Trail. A lot area, sixty-nine hundred square feet, sixty foot wide lot, hundred and fifteen feet deep, and again, a house pad. I don't think this, I think that's a typo, I think it's more like twenty-five hundred square feet, but well within the range of what we were proposing. So, I'll turn it back to Mason.
Uh, thanks, so, and, and obviously, I think visuals help a lot more than just throwing numbers at folks of, uh, you know, going from forty thousand square feet down to eight thousand seems like a drastic drop, obviously, just from sheer numbers. Um, but obviously, we wanted to show a visual of what's out there and what those kind of implications are if, you know, density is obviously very important, um, for all towns and all municipalities. But just keeping in mind that it is a good sized lot, there's a lot that's out there that we looked at, a lot smaller than this. Um, and also wanted to note that literally six hundred feet up the road, next road up is about thirty acres that is already Zoned SF five. So we are fitting into the category in the areas of, uh, you know, similar zonings, uh, in our area, although, you know, you're looking at the pictures we had sent prior to that of, you know, just one acre lots, um, and half acre lots directly next door to us. That really, being said, that's, uh, we just kind of wanted to visually show that to you guys and get your opinions and thoughts and, uh, just kind of get that across. And that should be it for us.
Okay, well, uh, this is Todd Barber, Mayor, can I speak? Anyway, um, so you're proposing no changes from last time?
Uh, we are not proposing any changes from last time, just mainly due to us looking at the ten thousand square foot lots, uh, really drops our density down to, uh, uh, just an unmanageable, um, amount of lots for overall cost of what the market's going to bear. Um, that's obviously built on the, uh, developers pro forma and what they think is going to actually be a feasible project.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, th- this is Bob Bennett, I'm with, uh, Stanley Martin Homes. Do you mind if I say a couple of words about this project as well?
Yeah, please go ahead. I think the mayor may be silent, but please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Hey, just to give everyone just a, um, kind of a future outlook on the prices, sales price of these homes, based on location, things of that nature, these homes are going to be, I would say, four fifty to six hundred thousand. Um, you know, obviously, the lot size is, you know, what Mason's been talking about is obviously pretty area, like, given the, the values of the homes, I would think I'd like to just make that point that they will be at least, you know, starting in the low four hundreds, probably finish out closer to six hundred thousand in this facility, in this location. Make sure I share that with everyone.
Um, Mr. Mayor, are you on, sir? All right, um, if the mayor is not on, let me just kind of help direct the meeting a little bit. Um, Ms. Howe, do you have any questions for the gentleman? Oh, Abby, can I go ahead and ask you to unmute the mics of the council members so that they can ask some questions?
But it should be able to be unmuted now.
Okay, so Ms. Howe, let me try again, Ms. Howe, do you have, do you have any questions for the gentleman? Okay, we'll come back to Ms. Howe. How about you, Mr. Head?
Um, well, with no changes, uh, my biggest concern is, um, traffic and roads. We, uh, we know that, uh, NCDOT is, uh, hurting for money, which means the roads will be way behind. Appears to be way behind, if, if nothing changes. Uh, and, uh, so we're just going to continue to, uh, have traffic, uh, issues everywhere, and, and I guess that's, that's my biggest concern, uh, going forward.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, what about you, Mr. Morse?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, well, you know, I'm a little disappointed, and there wasn't really any improvements, uh, just really more of a sales pitch coming back to us to convince us to approve these, this particular development based on Forest Lawn, Potter Road, Brandon Oaks, and other ones that, uh, quite honestly, I had n- n- no participation in whether, uh, on any decision making on those. Again, uh, my concern is that it does butt up to Weddington. I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't appreciate if I was, uh, a municipality that was focused on one acre development sites and then having apartments or whatever pushed right up against me. Um, that's already happened in Stallings, and that wasn't received too well. Um, the other thing is, is there's really no amenities in any of this package, uh, that I've seen. Um, and again, it's just, you know, how much house can we bang into this little spot? And just as a reminder, um, or, or we were reminded that there are other developments with worse density. Now, we'll, we'll say one thing about Brookhaven, um, with this higher development density, or excuse me, a higher density when developing, um, and as we're well aware of the stormwater implications, um, and we have some of those over at Brookhaven as well. So, I, I'm just not really big on this project, I think it needs a little more elbow room, and especially with our comprehensive plan coming up. Um, I'd, I'd like to, um, I just want to see some improvements, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Mayor.
Okay, sorry, we are having some technical difficulties. Marcus, uh, would, do you want to speak, or do you mind if I speak?
Um, if you won't mind letting the, let's see if the developer would like to respond, and then you can speak, um, based on the comments that he's heard or that they've heard so far, if they have any sort of rebuttal or additional information they want to prove, um, they want to provide, and then, um, you can speak and I'll speak after you. But go ahead, Mason.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Um, yeah, to answer to, obviously, uh, no change in it, we did go back and look at it, it, uh, with larger lots, the lot counts didn't work, I mean, it just, with the infrastructure costs and everything to throw into it, it's going to throw these house prices pushing a million dollars. It's not really what we're trying to attain here, we're trying to, you know, obviously, the housing market, it, it needs product, it needs attainable, not affordable, attainable homes, uh, in the four hundred range and four fifty range. There's just not a lot out there, you know, that is in that range. Um, and also, for the amenity standpoint, no subdivision can honestly take on an amenity, or no homeowner can take on an amenity, less than two hundred lots. Uh, you go less than two hundred lots, your, your HOA fees are sky high, and it really pushes people away from those neighborhoods. Not that we can't provide it, i- it's just, again, it's a cost onto the homeowner and the property owner on top of the taxes that are, uh, going to be higher with the property tax and size of the lots and price points. Yeah, so no, no changes, I understand, that's how it's, uh, presented, but we definitely went back and studied it, and this was the best option that we presented originally, um, that we think, and it, and just to get a medium density in there. I don't know if Mark or Bob have any other concerns, comments?
No, I mean, I think you said it best, that the biggest thing is if, these are one acre lots, you know, I guess, when you look at families coming into the area, or, or anybody for that matter, to, to, to look for a home, it, it's going to push so many people away from this area. Um, you know, I lived in Union County for many, many years, really pushes people just away from this area completely. And, um, you know, it's such a beautiful area, I think, it, you're not losing the vibe. Hey, what if I live, uh, had this small lot? Well, the thing is, in a smaller lot, the value is still going to be, you know, starting in the mid-four hundreds by the time it's optioned out, it's going to be close to six hundred thousand, but if you go to one acre lot, you're going to throw so many people out of the market. Yeah, I, this, this is not attainable.
Um, and I guess, sorry, one more point that I found interesting is, in reading through the, uh, Union County Comp Plan, that seventy-five percent of, uh, potential home buyers from the Raleigh area moving to here, um, and surrounding areas that they did the study on, uh, seventy-five percent of them wanted smaller lots, they didn't want the maintenance and the upkeep. Um, you know, obviously, walkability was a very important part to them, um, but obviously, with going with bigger lots, less tax revenue means, you know, there's a lot, less amenities and parks and stuff that Indian Trail can provide.
All right, thank you. Mayor, you want to go ahead and get your comments?
Right, I'm, right, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, thank you, Marcus. All right, uh, now, as I say, with like, just my opinion, this is just my observation and from the people around, uh, so don't take it as, 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 um, scripture. One, I agree with Councilman Morse that it sounded like a sales pitch. The most honest thing I heard, um, as far as from your heart, was that it pushes your prices out of the market. And right there and then was what needed to be said first. Um, you'll always find a buyer for a house, been in real estate for more years than I'd like to admit, um, but you may push some families out, as you, as you do say. Uh, pushing against Weddington, um, gentlemen, you may, and I'm not a voting member, you may just hit a time that is just not feasible for what you want to do, considering the hundred year storms causing more flooding, the COVID virus, the uncertainty and unrest in this country, the fear of many people, the lack of people in Union County and Indian Trail of wanting more homes and density right at this particular moment because there's no plans for the roads to be improved. Uh, you've really walked into unprecedented territory that's not fair to you. And, um, I hope you, I hope the best for you and your development, but it just seems like a horrible time right now for, and, and you're right, for more expensive homes, but hopefully, the market, if approved, can handle what you have, considering all those unknown factors. Okay, Marcus, you're up.
Um, so, here's, here's what I want to say to you, gentlemen, first of all, uh, thank you for coming to the town, to, to
I know.
Um, one of the things I want to ask you about is, um, the size of the lot, you mentioned it's, it, it's at least eight thousand, but from that, I'm going to infer you are also going to have larger lots than the eight thousand, right? Is that a fair assessment on my part?
Uh, no, the, the average lot size is going to be eight thousand square feet.
At least, but not, not less than eight thousand?
No, not less than eight thousand at all. The smallest lot will be eight thousand square feet.
Right, so, um, the, the, the thing about it is, um, you know, I, I know, you know, some of the other council members have mentioned things like COVID and the current environment and so forth, but the thing is, this house is not going to build in the next six months if we deal with it get approved. It looks like it's going to be, you know, next year, or year and a half before you actually get, um, constru- um, construction started based on the plans and all the approvals that you have to go with, so, um, listen, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of open to the project, I'm not necessarily against the project. The traffic concerns, they are what they are, being honest with you, but we cannot deny a project based on traffic. Is, that is something we cannot figure into, and I know NCDOT has been, you know, having some financial difficulties, but at the same time, too, um, you know, I, I think that there, there could be another conversation had about that particular project, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you that, hey, you know what, I'm, I'm, I'm against your project. Um, i- i- I think that if we, if, if there's a couple of things that could be discussed, um, a little more to sort of, um, try and find a happy medium, it's something that I'd be interested in doing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that I am promising you that the other council members will approve your project, that is based on their own interpretation, and they've been honest with you, too, at that point. Um, I, I, I do like when people, you, because this project is going to be annexed into the town, that's what you're kind of looking for, annexing into the town based on the zoning that you're asking for approval, should you bring that to the planning board and the council, but, um, uh, I have a feeling if this thing goes to the county, it's going to get approved and it's going to get in, so, you know, right now, my, my mention to the council is, you know, you either try and work and, and figure out on how you find a happy medium with this gentleman and, and figure this out, because if they go down to the county, I think the county will probably allow this to come in, it doesn't have any apartments involved in there. There's, the, the lot size is eight thousand, and eight thousand square feet, it's in a desirable area of, of the town and the county to live in, which is the proximity to Weddington and so forth, so, it's something that I'd ask, I'd ask the council to take a hard look at, um, in, and, and being able to allow that to be annexed in with the conditions that you, you know, the council would deem appropriate, before they're sending that down back to the county and there'll be no tax revenue to the town, who will drive on the roads and so forth. So it's just something that I just mentioned, but want to appreciate you guys coming in here and, and bringing this to us, um, at this point in time.
Hey, guys, hey, this is Bob, this is Bob, hey, Mayor, do you mind if I just made a few more comments?
Yeah, yeah, make, keep them under three minutes.
Oh, well, definitely. Hey, just to give everyone a heads up, so a couple of things we can do, because I've been doing this a long time, I know, Mayor, you know that, is, you know, we can also talk to DOT to make sure, you know, if there are any impacts, we can certainly have a discussion, and, and you made a point, too, someone made a point that the build out for this neighborhood is probably at least four or five years down the road at a, at the earliest. Um, so we, we can definitely talk to DOT and get something in writing for what they recommend. The other part of this, too, is, if you look at what was sold in, in that school during the last twelve months, the average sales price is five sixty-seven. So we would be coming out, out of the gate at that, at that base price point, so we're actually going to be higher than the average sales for the last twelve months, which I would, everyone could probably agree on, on this call, the last twelve months have been pretty strong, albeit for the last couple of months, probably I would say April, but we're going to be higher than an average sales price, so we're actually bringing more value to the area, which is a pretty strong point to bring up to, if any neighborware came up and said, hey, why would you devalue? We're actually adding, adding value to the area, so those are some pretty strong points, I just want, you know, everyone to consider that as part of this call.
Thank you. Okay, um, at this time, I mean, I'm sure there'll be more discussion moving forward, working with the planning board and the staff, and we look forward to seeing what you propose further.
For the feedback?
Thank you.
Let's move on to
Thanks, guys.
This time.
Thank you.
Have a good day. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, everybody, um, I guess, um, I'll lead that. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll also have our moment of silence for Okay, thank you. Move on to agenda additions and deletions. I have a note here, the change item ten C, that's Planning Board and Board of Adjustment Member Appointment. It looks like it's already written in on my, um, agenda, but for the, uh, public notification, I'll need one of you to just make that motion.
I'll make that motion to change item ten C to Planning Board and Board of Adjustment Member Appointments.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. Um, Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, the motion was approved unanimously and passes. At this time, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Go moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, that was approved unanimously and amended agenda approved. First item on the agenda is a presentation for agency donation request. Ms. Barron, are you on the call? Or Robin?
Hi, how are you guys?
Hey, how you doing, Robin?
I'm doing well, praying for you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for your time. Um, some of you already may be aware or familiar of our Back to School Bash. Um, I understand some of that information had been sent out to you in advance, so I'm just going to kind of go over a little bit of our program and what we offer, and if you have any questions, um, don't hesitate to interrupt me, um, I'm okay with that. We've been doing the Back to School Bash since two thousand fourteen. Um, we started this event based on providing, uh, school supplies, shoes, uh, food, haircuts for free for Union County students. Uh, most of these students that we're providing in the area are from one of the fourteen Title One elementary or middle schools. Um, this program is, uh, open all the way up to our high school twelfth grades. Um, to date, we served approximately eight thousand students. Last year, our funding was based on donations provided by community businesses and local partners. Uh, we work with Samaritan's Feet, where we pay twenty-five dollars for a pair of shoes, and that includes a pair of socks and the support of Samaritan's Feet to help us run the project, which is really instrumental in serving such a large volume. Typically, each year, it's about fifteen hundred students, um, that have registered, of course, we expect some students not to show, but to date, we have served over eight thousand students. Not one parent had to pay anything for any of the supplies that have been given. Um, this year, we're planning on serving, uh, the community again, starting, uh, our date is August the, Sunday, August the eighth, and we are pro- And we are trying to promote our programming once we get confirmation on some date changes. That way, we can serve the community during the day outside of Carolina courts. That way, we can have a drive-through program and be able to still provide and meet the needs of the students in the community. Students will have to pre-register. They will pre-register, providing us their grade, what school they go to, male or female, and what size shoe they will need. We are hoping to include a print where the student or the parent could print that print off, measure the child's foot so we have some form of an accuracy. Take that and hope that that parent uses that as a good measuring tool so we can get the most accurate sized shoes. We are thinking outside of the box. We're doing things as best as we can for the pandemic. But we know that we still have to provide for these kids when they go back to school. There's over 100 volunteers that we've had in each year. They get a shirt so they're easily identified with. We have the Spanish interpreters on hand. We do serve our Spanish community. And by providing these school supplies for the student, it helps them provide a successful start to the new school year. And it really helps offset some of the expenses for parents. And so we're praying that everything goes as we planned. There's still a few logistics that we're working on. But we partnered with other organizations, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, where they hosted an eye exam this year with COVID and the pandemic. There's, we just, there's limits to what we can do this year. But sadly, we'll be doing the best that we can. And I apologize for my cuckoo clock going off. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Robin. I'm going to begin this one with Mr. Barber.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say this is a wonderful organization. Would like to see the town help out. I've gotten a T-shirt. Robin's been more than happy to put me to work over there. So with the Lions Club and everything. But I hope the town would consider, we do have budget in the future for helping organizations that are local like this. And I know with businesses not having as much money and the Lions Club and Rotary and different ones not getting as much and churches not having as much money, I can see that this organization, why they're coming to us in this time of need. And I got to say that I would easily throw my hat in the ring on this one. But thank you for coming, Robin.
Yeah.
Mr. Morse, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes. Of the 8,000 students since 2014, how many of those students were from Indian Trail?
The vast majority, the way we market, is for Union County. The exact numbers, I can only give you a guesstimate on that as far as the percentage for Union County schools as a whole. In breaking it down to Indian Trail, I'm going to say about 30% of them are Indian Trail, maybe more. Pastor Scott's online here too, maybe he can help with those figures. Because I just started with the chairing of it. This past year was my first year. And I'm privileged to seeing all the numbers. But when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the students in need. Pastor Scott, are you able to speak? Is he allowed to speak?
If he has those figures.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I can't give you the exact figures, but I'm with Robin. I think it's probably 30 to 35% Indian Trail.
Thank you. Any other comments, Jerry? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yes, I do. So it was included in the agenda packet, of course. And one of the things that I did is I clicked on the link to go to the Union County B2SB website. And when I got there, I noticed that the donate button works fine, but the registration button does not.
I can answer that for the registration. We haven't opened up the registration until we've secured our logistics as to are we going to be inside Carolina courts? Are we going to be outside the courts? We are working with the courts to set that date. Pastor Scott could probably give a little more information on that. But we are planning to try to have more of a drive-through and open it up longer on a Saturday versus the Sunday where we started at 1:00 and then ran into the afternoon. Our goal is to be able to keep our volunteers out of the sun as long as we can and start it earlier in the day. Most of our volunteers are, they go to church on Sunday morning. So we want to make sure that we're able to utilize our volunteer base. And if we bump it up early on a Sunday morning, we may lose a lot of our volunteers. So that's why we haven't confirmed that. We're waiting to get confirmation if we can use the courts on Saturday to change our date. But we are waiting for a green light so we can get that registration open, sir.
So do you have any other funding lined up for this B2SB?
We have other churches that have committed, some churches, some of the churches have committed to making monthly donations. Most of our donations have come from different corporations, different businesses. Now, as far as confirmation of funds, no. No, this is strictly through our churches and asking our community businesses. And as Mr. Barber mentioned, there's a lot of businesses that have been closed during the pandemic. And how could we ask them for money? I mean, yes, we're going to still ask, but, you know, the donations may not be as what they were last year. We didn't really have problems raising money last year because we had, funding was not an issue, but this year it is. We're looking at, still trying to provide that many pairs of shoes. And we're looking at a bill at $26,000. Union West Rotary Club is working on trying to get a grant to help at least with 5,000 of that funds. But they haven't gotten approval or disapproval. We may not know anything until after the bash has happened. So it's kind of questionable where a lot of our fundings are. And we pray that, you know, we are a prayerful group, you know. God will provide some way, some shape, somehow. We will cross our fingers, we hope.
And have you approached any other municipalities for donation?
No, you're our first so far.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Head? Did you have any comments, sir? Mike?
So what's the typical cost per student? What's the average cost per student?
For the shoes, it's $25. And they are getting a good pair of sneakers, a pair of socks. And we also provide a book bag and allowed, in the past, we allowed them to go shopping and select their school supplies. Each grade group has their different needs, their basic needs. And in this link here that I'm fixing to send out in the group chat, it has our website and our Facebook links on there. And it shows pictures of the students and the items that they receive. They're able to select and go shopping for their own colored book bags, the supplies, the folders. They get to pick which colors. So it's a beautiful thing to let them do the shopping as a student and having the parents stand behind. But a lot of that was based on donations.
You're expecting how many, you're hoping for how many?
How many students?
Yes.
Our goal is to be able to provide at least for 1,500 students. That's our goal.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Howe?
I think it's a great idea. And I don't know what our finances are at this time, but I think we should consider helping them for sure.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. Mr. McIntyre? Are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Yes, I'm sorry. I was speaking to mute. Seeing that this request is coming before the end of the fiscal year. And that's a question for Jim and Ray. We know that this is not the first donation, the request that will come to us. We do know that there's considerable demand that's going to arise because of different businesses closing and other agencies throughout the county or town, you know, needing some of these funds. The question that I have for Messrs. Walterwitz and Allen is, we haven't closed the books yet for 2019, 2020 fiscal year. If there's a possibility, I don't know what the council will decide. And maybe Mr. Barber has a suggestion. But is there a way that we could probably appropriate some funds from some other bucket to provide for that particular item? And Mr. Barber, I mean, I do think, I agree with Ms. Howe. I do think it's a good idea that it serves people within Indian Trail and Union County, wider Union County. Especially now, a lot of, you know, people may not necessarily be employed or underemployed or being followed and so forth. And they do need to provide some of those things for their kids. So I am in support of that. But I don't know, Mr. Barber, what amount you are in mind. And if there's an amount, could we, Mr. Allen and Mr. Walterwitz, could we work to appropriate some funds from another bucket of money to go towards that so that we don't delete the donation request as the year starts? And you.
Hi, this is Jim. The year is still open, Marcus.
So we could appropriate some funds from some bucket that you deemed necessary, you already deemed necessary, based on the request amount that I guess we council will have. And just one thing, Robin, this is something where in the next, the next meeting is when we'll vote on approving this. But by then, we, if the council decides to, right, that's how it works. It would be the next meeting we would decide on that. But I'm in favor of it. Mr. Barber said he is, Ms. Howe said he is. Mike Head and Jerry Morse, I haven't heard kind of which way they are. But they'll make that determination too as well. But if we could, if there's an amount thought that you think you deem necessary or you deem appropriate, you could probably let us know. And then we'll kind of work with the town manager and, yeah.
Well, did Ms. Barron have an amount she was asking for?
Well, I'd like the whole thing, but I'm almost said shoot for the stars if you could. But we, as a, as a group, we would be grateful for anything that the town could be able to provide. If I had to give a number, I'd ask for 5,000. But I understand if I only get 500. We are a grateful group. And we, in our heart, know that some way, somehow, the funds will come someday. But we would pray that it comes from our town. I'm a taxpayer and there's a lot of volunteers that are involved. And they all live here in Indian Trail, as far as a lot of our volunteers. So we're crossing our fingers for it.
Well, Mr. Walterwitz, to follow up on Mr. McIntyre's question, did you say we could do it out of this budget already?
The year is still open. The year is still open until the 30th. We'd have to do a transfer.
But is that a yes then?
Yeah, that's a yes thought.
Your Honor, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think there, I think you could do it, but I think you need to do it before June 30 because the year closes at June 30. And your policy is set up that these requests are presented at one meeting and you approve them at the next meeting. Well, unfortunately, this is the last meeting of the current fiscal year. Your next meeting will be the first meeting of the new fiscal year. So I think in order to do what Mr. McIntyre is proposing to do, I think you need to suspend, you would need to suspend your rules and you would need to approve this request at this meeting so that the funds can come out of this year. Because once the year is ended, you can't reach back into the prior year to get funds.
Okay, thank you. Can I chime in for a moment, please? Before you say anything? Okay, thank you, Todd.
I was just, I was just going to say to piggyback on Mr. Allen then is what we could do is still do it out of next year's budget where we have $4,500 approved. And I'm thinking a $1,000 donation. And then we would have voted on that next time. And then later on, if we ran out of the funds that are already approved for next budget, then we could do what Jim said and suspend the rules or do whatever if someone came to us down the road. And that would keep us in line with what Mr. Allen said as far as following the rules for now. And that would kind of keep it simple as to what I'm thinking. But if everything's okay with that, then I'd say we put it through a vote on $1,000 for the next meeting with the next budget would be my thinking. And that's to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hi, Robin.
Hi.
It's a very worthy cause. And I've watched over the years how you've provided for all of our children. It's Union County Public Schools. It's not Indian Trail Public Schools. They're all our children. They go to school together. And no one needs to begin the year without the simplest of paper, books, new shoes, a book bag. And many students do. I know this because I'm in the schools quite a bit. And it should never be questioned. If something that goes directly back to the children of our county be questioned, it should not be, it should not be. I apologize for that, but I believe that strongly. I'm not out to insult any other council members. I would be, I myself would say suspend the policy and use the $1,000 from this year's budget that we know we have. And we can't worry about the unknown of next year and vote on it tonight. But that would just be my experience of knowing how things can collapse very quickly in the future. And you need every penny for yourself. We have it right now and our students are in need and we're in uncharted territory. That being said, it's up to the council to go either way. Somebody.
Before we do that, so maybe we offer, we offer Mr. Morse, Mr. Head and Ms. Howe an opportunity to chime in if they need to.
Well, thank you. I suppose, Mayor, that comment was maybe made based on my comment when I asked how many residents of Indian Trail have directly benefited. The reason I asked that question is because this is Indian Trail taxpayers' money that we are now going to donate. So I thought that that is an appropriate question. When, especially when I follow up with the municipal, asking how many other municipalities. I did some rough numbers. There's what, it looked like there was somewhere 40,000, if there were 1,600 students at $25 a pop. That's kind of why I was asking where these funds coming from. It would be nice to know that we had 10 municipalities that were giving in spirit some monies as well. If we have $1,000 that are left in the budget from this year for the donations and someone wants to make a motion to suspend the rules and to do that, I will vote for that $1,000 tonight. That's my follow up.
Thank you, Jerry. And thank you for your clarification.
Can I chime in on what Jerry said? I would be, I'd be in favor of suspending the rules also. And but, you know, Jerry did make a good question. Because I can tell you, being the president of Lions Club and different places around, they asked the same question. They're the Indian Trails Lions Club. And everybody wants to know when they're given how many people are from Indian Trail going. So that's a fair question. So, yeah, I mean, you know, so I got the same question from the members when I, you know, so that's, yeah. But if you want to suspend the rules, you know, tonight, I'm for that. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Oh, but Mr. Head.
Well, real quick, Marcus, before he speaks, Robin.
Yes, sir.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know you and I think I know the answer to this. You're going to hit up everybody, aren't you?
I'm going to do my best. This isn't, you guys are my first.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for two. Okay, Mr. Head?
I'm fine with suspending the rules.
Okay, Ms. Howe?
I also am fine with suspending the rules.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion then. Make a motion that we suspend the rules based on our donation request. That we wait two weeks, we're going to waive that two-week requirement. And that we approve a donation request of $1,000 to the Back to School Bash group. That should come out of this year's, this current fiscal year's budget. Mr. Walterwitz and Mr. Allen will make the determination as to where, what part of funds this monies will come from. But I do know that we do have some money left over from this year's budget. And. this year's budget, and that we provide that, we, we make that donation to the Back to School group.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to suspend the policy rules of donation to make that request for a thousand dollars tonight for the Back to School Bash. Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, it was approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Thank you, and when we open up that registration line, I'll be looking for your names as volunteers.
I'll do my best.
As usual, I get a triple, triple X sized T-shirt, thank you, Robin.
Right, right now, I need a small.
I think we can accommodate that, thank you, guys.
Okay, that brings us to public com, regular public comments. Ms. Queen, were there any?
I have none, none, just for general public comments.
Okay, thank you. Law enforcement update, Captain James, are you here with any updates?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Captain James, are you on vacation?
I am.
That's good.
Then what are you doing here?
You're dedicated, man.
Truly, I've been sequestered somewhere a little south of y'all, just a little bit closer to the equator.
Okay.
The, everything's going real good, we have had some, a, over the last few weeks, had a couple close calls with some COVID exposures, lucky so far that all of them have come back negative, been very blessed with that. We've added a couple new ones that have either replaced or filled some slots that we've had open for the past several months. Everything seems to be flowing very well. I would like to speak of the protests that happened on Friday there at Somali again, no problems whatsoever, very peaceful, and they conducted themselves very, a, as expected, as I expected they would go. I would like to make a quick shout out to our Parks and Rec Director Hayden Kramer for his help last week with the lieutenant's assessments for the office. He was, he proved to be a great asset in assessing these sergeants that are wishing to become lieutenants, and just to tell you a little bit of background on that, the, during the assessment, they were, provided a problem that revolved around Indian Trail, and it was about putting the gathering together there at one of the parks and having to deal with a large amount of people. Having Hayden sit through those assessments proved to be very beneficial for us in a training aspect as well as it was for those, those candidates, so I'd like to thank him for that. Other than that, everything seemed to be running, running very well, and the, I would like, I would like to add one other thing, some of the council members, I'm sure, have received complaints from the community about four-wheelers and motorcycles, and especially around the Indian Trail February area, behind the Henry Bridge School, and also around the new portions of Bonterra, we have identified those individuals and are working with them to try to, if there was any property damage that was done that needed to be fixed, anything that we could to try to, to get that done and get it fixed for them. Other than that, anybody have any questions?
I'll just open the floor for that one. Any questions for him?
I have a comment, this is Mr. Barber.
Go ahead, Mr. Barber, you're holding up his vacation.
Okay, sorry to bother you, but I just wanted to give you a thank you to you and your staff. Earlier this year, I had a son had a flat tire late at night on the way home from his part-time job, and two deputies helped him and showed him how to change that tire, and that's not something they have to do, and they didn't know it was my son, and I just want to say, you know, leadership starts at the top, and if your crew's a reflection of you, tell them thank you, and I greatly appreciate it, that's just the type of thing that I like to see officers doing and people doing and helping people, and I just want to say I thank you.
Ah, sure, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful comment, Todd.
And Todd should have, Todd should have told the kid how to, should have showed the kid how to change a tire, man. Come on, everybody wanted to see that, man, come on, boy.
Well, that's what I, I was gonna ask.
I was trying not to go there.
I was gonna ask, did we show him how to change the tire, or did we, you know, do it for him? Because, you know, we're all about, we're all about education.
They showed him, he was educated. And thank God he didn't call me and get me out of bed to do it. Thank you, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Enjoy your vacation.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve it, there's no questions or comments.
Mayor, this is Mike, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
And Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's the continuation and follow-up to the fiscal year 2021 budget. First, I'm going to open the floor for the public comments that were received by Ms. Queen, so council can have proper reply.
I received one indirect comment that was given to me, it was from Jim White, Mr. Walterwitz, who's our finance director, and the relevant comment regarding the budget, I'm just gonna read what he says from Jim White, ABC Store. "I have reviewed the proposed budget for Indian Trail for next year, again, clear, precise, and easy to follow. To me, the town came out better than I had expected, great job as always. I agree with you that we should pay off Crooked Creek Park, and happy council gave you the approval to proceed." And that was Jim White.
Okay, any, any other, there were no others?
No others, no, sir.
All right. Council receive any comments from the public on the budget?
No, sir. I did not.
Okay. All right, from the silence, I assume it's no, I will close the public comments portion, and if there's any final comments by the council, I'm gonna go name by name, and before we request the vote on the budget. Mr. Morse?
No, no comments.
Okay, Mr. Head?
I have no comments.
All right. Mr. Barber?
No comment.
Ms. Howe?
No comment.
And Mr. McIntyre?
No comment.
Okay, judging by the amount, by the no comments by the council, just reassures Mr. White's public comments and the excellent job that you did on the budget. At this time, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget for Indian Trail.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is McIntyre, I'll go ahead and make the bud, make, make the motion for the adoption of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget ordinance number 200623-332.
Very thorough, McIntyre.
If I, may I interrupt, can we also add to that motion the, to set the tax rate? Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
So, one, one question then, when you say to set the tax rate, meaning if I make the motion and say, leave the tax rate remains in effect at the current rate, would that be, would that suffice?
With, with, with no increases?
With no increases?
Yes, that works, thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's try that motion again. So I want to make a motion for the adoption of the town of Indian Trails fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget ordinance number 200623-332. Let it also reflect that there is no increase in taxes to the residents and that the current tax rate remains in effect.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Morse?
Enthusiastically approve.
Mr. Head?
I approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand that the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the town of Indian Trail has been approved with no increase in taxes and the tax rate remaining the same. Thank you. That brings us to new business. All right, I, I did not print out all the paperwork, Ms. Queen, so I will need your assistance on this if needed by the council. Park Committee Member Appointments.
Abby, can you go to the next page, please?
Oh, I can see that.
Can you see?
I can see it. Let me try and... Oh, no, I, I can't read that. Sorry. That is way, even when I zoom in. What, how many seats are available? It looks like there's...
I believe there's sixteen.
Seat three? Seat three? Oh, wait, that's the wrong one.
So Parks and Rec, which is the one, the second one?
Right, there's five seats available.
Right.
Okay, are there any applications?
There are, they were in the board packet, and I believe we have our board chairs present who are going to make the recommendations for each of those seats.
If the board chair would make the recommendations at this time?
So the, the first, the first person on the agenda is the Park Committee. Do we have Ms. Rowland on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, here, I'll rest, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Rowland, would you make your recommendation at this time, and if possible, to speak up because you sound a little muffled?
Sure. I would like to recommend for seat one, I would like to make a motion to appoint Brian Cross to the Park Committee with the term ending on, no, June 30th, 2023.
Okay. That's the, seat one's been recommended for Brian Cross. Counsel, do you have any discussion on this, or if you'd like to approve or recommend someone else for seat one?
Well, can I ask a question real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
If we are, if, if there are five, there are, there are six, there what, there are five seats, could you make all the nominations for the seats, and then we go ahead and either have a discussion and then go from there?
That sounds like a good idea. Mr. Rowland, can you make your recommendation for seat two?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Stephen Dotson to the Park Committee with term ending June 30th, 2022. For seat three, I guess for myself, for the chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Olin, which is myself, to the Park Committee with term ending June 30th, 2021. And for seat four, I'd like to make a recommendation to appoint Kristy Starnes to the Park Committee with term ending June 30th, 2023, and seat five is currently vacant, so we do not have a recommendation, no one had applied for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowland. Counsel, there's been four applications, and the four that are recommended, if you have any discussions, questions, or would you like to, you can vote for them all in one, one big package, or you can pull someone out, that's entirely up to the council and the motion that's made.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Morse?
Could, could we make a motion for each person, given they have different term ending dates, please?
If that's what you want, Kathy. But normally, we do it in a bundle, and they always have that.
We have the dates, right? We, we know, we know, we know the, the different dates, but I think Mr. Morse and Mr. Barber had a question or comment.
Okay, I heard Mr. Morse first.
Oh, I was just, going to be requested, we recognized to make a motion, that was all.
Mr. Barber?
No, I was just gonna make the motion, so I'll let Mr. Morse deal with...
Mr. Morse, you want to make your motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve Brian Cross, Stephen Dotson, Brian Olin, and Kristy Starnes to the Parks and Recreation Committee Board Assignments.
Okay, based off the...
Recommendation of the... Yes.
Recommendation of the chair. Okay.
I can do that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morse has made the motion. Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
And Mr. McIntyre? Okay, thank you. Stormwater Committee Member Appointments, Mr. Hunsinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recommend Joshua Allen to seat one, Francis Gibbs to seat two, Shirley Howe will continue to be a chair at seat three, Larry Miller, seat four, Alan Mosley, seat five, and Chris Rowe, seat six.
How many applications did you receive for the record?
All, these are all renewals except for Francis Gibbs, she was an alternate, and she is moving into a seat now, so everybody else has been on the committee for several years and decided to reapply.
Okay. That being said, counsel?
Do we have a term expiration for, for this, these seats, or are they all at the same time, or it's different times?
Yes, sir, there's...
Go ahead, Todd.
Yes, sir, there's different terms, I can state those if you want.
Well, just, I think, Ms. Queen, you would need that for the motion, or?
It's on, it's on the paper.
He gave them seats, so there are two for term ending 2023, and that's Mr. Allen and Mr. Miller, Ms. Gibbs and Mr. Mosley are 2022, and Ms. Howe and Ms. Rowe would be 2021.
Okay, so that's fine, as long as you have that in the motion, then we're good.
I have it, thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel, if there's no further questions, we need a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we, based on the recommendation from Mr. Hunsinger and the seats assigned to the various applicants, that we recognize those and make a motion to appoint these people to the Stormwater Committee.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to acknowledge the, to accept the referral of the, Mr. Hunsinger, the board chair, and the respective seats as proposed, all in favor, sorry, we're not... Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
The record stands, the motion was approved unanimously and passed. That brings us to Planning Board and Board, we can't, we don't do these together.
No.
Planning Board.
Well, it's one and then the other, but Brandy's doing both.
Right, we'll do one and the other. Planning Board? Oh, Brandy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Our chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Dennis Gay, is traveling and not able to log on with us, so on behalf of our Planning Board Chairman, I would like to recommend Mr. Joe Lidge for seat seven for Planning Board with a term expiring June 30th, 2023, and he would like to recommend Ms. Meg Fielding for seat two with a term expiring June 30th of 2023 as well.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll need a motion. Anyone?
I'll make the motion then. We'll make a motion to appoint the two candidates to, the two open seats, based on the recommendation from the Planning Board Chairman, as read by Brandy, for the terms that are expiring more than 2023, I think seat two and seat seven.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to accept the board chair's recommendation as read by Ms. Keith for the respective seats. Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
And Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, the motion carries unanimously. Now for the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you, and finally, for Board of Adjustment, our chairman, Mr. John Eidenbruegge, was not able to be with us tonight either. He is recommending for Mr. Ronald Butler to be appointed to seat five with a term ending June 30th of 2021. Um, he is recommending for Mr. Ronald Butler to be appointed to seat five with a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, and Mr. John Hemby be appointed to seat three with that same term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Counsel, if there's no questions or concerns, we'll need a motion. Don't be shy.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion again then. I'm waiting for other people to make the motion, but...
I understand.
We'll make a motion for the two, fill the two seats of the Board of Adjustment as, um, as suggested, or, um, by the chairman, um, for, um, for seat three and seat five with a term expiration in twenty twenty-three, as read by, um, Ms. Dees.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion for the Board of Adjustments, um, recommendations of the board chair's recommendations, as read by Ms. Dees. Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, the motion approves unanimously. Thank you all. Now we move on to the ABC Board Proposed Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One Budget and Message. Mr. Allen, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the, um, your regulations require that the ABC Board submit their proposed budget to you each year. Um, it doesn't require council approval, but they do have to provide it to you, um, as a matter of information, so we've included it here in the agenda package. Um, of course, you're welcome to discuss it or have any comments, and we'll bring those back to the board if you'd like, but we're providing it to, to comply with your regulations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. This was an informational item. I'll go down the list, see if anybody had any messages to give back. Mr. Morse?
None at this time.
Mr. Head?
Have no comments.
Mr. Barber?
No comment.
Ms. Howe?
No comment.
No comment from me, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Union County Twenty Fifty Mid-Plan Summit. Mr. Allen, the floor, you still have the floor.
Thank you, um, Your Honor. We enclosed information in your agenda packages about this summit. This is regarding the, um, update to the comprehensive plan for Union County. The morning will be, um, dedicated to that plan update, and the afternoon will be, uh, dedicated to strategic planning for Union County Public Works for their utilities. They're requesting that each jurisdiction municipality send one staff representative and one elected representative. I've asked Ms. Dees to, uh, represent the town as the staff representative. She's been active in their ongoing land use update plan process. Um, so the board would need to designate one of your members, uh, who would be available for that day. It's essentially, I think, nine AM to four PM to represent the town, um, at that meeting, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, um, do you have a recommendation of which of you would be the willing to go first? Who's, who's able and willing to go on that date first? Mr. Morse, are you able to go on that date? I mean...
On the sixth, negative.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Head?
No, I think we already have, um, someone that, uh, has decided to go.
Oh, okay, if it's already been decided. All right, sorry about that. Who's going?
Mr. Barber is the one we're going to nominate to go, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Barber, make sure you bring your, um, spare tire with you and your, uh, dusting case.
That county won't know what hit them. Thank you, yes. I, I appreciate that, guys.
Okay. Um, Kathy, you have that?
I have that, thank you very much. Councilors and consensus, thank you.
Okay, would you, um, make sure Mr. Barber has all his needs and a reminder?
We absolutely will, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is the stormwater proposal. Mr. Hunsinger, you're back on.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I hope everybody had a chance to look at the, the, uh, the proposal in the agenda packet, and, um, if we can go to that map, Abby, that's in there, I'm, well, give them a visual. Basically, you know, this was the area that, uh, we got several phone calls. I think four or five residents called in, um, evidently. Uh, basically, the floodplain sort of backed up, uh, started backing up into this, these homes at the lower end of Poplar Glen, and, um, basically, just ended up, the road, the roadway drainage and everything just couldn't take it, so, uh, so we decided, we looked at the area, and, and only way to really start really looking at this to see, uh, what we can do for these folks is to perform a drainage analysis, which is basically what we did for Indian Trail Park, which we're designing right now, so, um, we need to, uh, get the, the third-party engineer to go out there, take a look at things, uh, come up with some alternatives, and then based on those alternatives, we'll come back to the council and propose a design. The proposal, it's about fifty, I think it's fifty thousand dollars, around that amount. At that, it's really the survey, and as you can see, the area is very wide. The floodplain is basically from, uh, from the Chestnut Lane, which is at the bottom of the, of the map, all the way up until it takes that ninety-degree bend towards the cul-de-sac of Poplar Glen. That's all floodplains, so we're gonna, we're gonna map that and everything, take a look and see what we can do with that, if anything. Uh, so that's about half the cost. That's the reason why the cost is a little bit higher than normal, but, um, uh, I'll take any questions.
Um, Mr. Morse?
Yeah, Todd, when do you anticipate, um, getting started pending council approval?
Uh, probably the first of, uh, next month. Sir, was...
Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Todd.
The, the main thing is that, that to get the contract started, so, uh, so he can get the surveyors lined up and see, usually surveyors, uh, these days, there's like a two-week lead time, so it's going to take a month just to get the survey back, probably, so we probably want to get, even really dive into, uh, or the engineer won't be able to dive into the analysis until probably August.
And, uh, one other question. If, um, if the survey comes back, um, let me, let me rephrase that. Once you get the results from the survey, is this something that we're trying to budget for next year, or would this be out for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, if we move forward as, as far as the town goes?
Uh, my goal would be to, uh, probably do a, uh, some kind of like budget amendment to this year's coming budget and try to get it into, uh, this year's.
Okay. Thanks, Todd, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Head?
I have no other questions.
Okay. Mr. Barber?
Uh, no, no other questions.
Ms. Howe?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. McIntyre?
No, I don't have any questions on that one, so...
Okay, I just have one question for, for Ms. Hunsinger. This is, is this the community that backs up near that, um, construction going on in Stallings? Um, off of Chestnut where the road had caved in?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, counsel, um, I believe they're looking for an action to move forward. Uh, Mr. Hunsinger, specifically, what are you looking to move forward on?
I'd just like for council vote to move forward with this, uh, proposal, pass order number five.
Okay. I need a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Poplar Glen Drive, um, drainage analysis, um, as presented, and not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Was that you, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Mr. Head's made the motion. Uh, Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
And Howe? And Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Let the record stand. The stormwater proposal for Poplar Glen Road, uh, request has been approved. Uh, Mr. Hunsinger?
Yeah.
Are you still with me?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to let those residents know that this was approved in an email, if you have their email addresses?
Yes, sir, we'll get back to them and give them an update.
All right, thank you very much. Um, okay. All right, that's good. All right, the next of, uh, discussion items, July council meeting format. Mr. Allen, the floor is yours. Hello, Mr. Allen?
I think you're muted, Mr. Allen. You're still muted, Mr. Allen.
Sorry, apologize for that, trying to go back and forth. So, um, we are finishing up in June, um, and we do need to plan for the meetings in July. Um, there's a mixture of what municipalities are doing. Some are trying to go back in person, having some folks, um, attend the meeting, have others uh, call in via Zoom or some other technology. Um, and so the council's going to need to make a decision, so we can plan for July. I did check with some of the nearby municipalities, it appears that, um, Stallings, um, Monroe, and Matthews, I think, are all planning to try to do electronic meetings for July, and then probably looking at in-person meetings following that. In our case, we think we're probably going to definitely want to go to in-person meetings in August because, um, we are going to be having some recommendations from the Planning Board coming to you after they meet in July. And Attorney Walter has recommended that, um, if we do have land use public hearings, that we have in-person, uh, meetings for those, so for that reason, I think we definitely will be looking at in August. But in July, we do not have any, anything like that. Um, so council has the option to either meet in person or continuing to meet virtually. Um, my recommendation would be with the uncertain picture right now, with the COVID-nineteen cases, with everything going up right now, that you consider, uh, meeting, continuing to meet virtually, but that is obviously your, your choice. We just need to know what you would prefer.
Okay. Uh, go in order with the, um, questions or comments. Mr. Morse?
Um, really no questions. I, I agree with the recommendation that we should stick with the virtual, uh, meetings, uh, through July. Um, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Um, Mr. Head?
Um, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Allen and Mr. Morse, that we continue as is.
Mr. Barber?
Well, if, you know, if they, if y'all want to do it virtually, that's fine with me. I, I don't have a preference, but, uh, yeah, virtual is fine.
Ms. Howe?
I think we should continue like we're doing right now until things get settled a little bit more.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, what, what the group said, I'm in agreement.
Okay, um, just the time of the meeting, for the record? Six thirty?
Your Honor, we assume you'd want to continue with the six-thirty meeting unless otherwise indicated.
I think it gives the biggest opportunity for the public to log on, and it is our traditional meeting time. Uh, if counsel has no objection.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, the, the, the six-thirty regular time.
All right, can we have a motion for that to make it official for July?
So I'll make a motion that we go for July's council meeting, we do continue with virtual meetings for the two meetings, and we will do so at, uh, the regular scheduled meeting time, which is six-thirty.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. Mr. Morse?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
Let the record stand, that Indian Trail Town Council meetings will be held at six-thirty PM via Zoom for the public.
July fourteenth and July...
Through the month of, July fourteenth and July twenty...
Eighth.
Twenty-eight, thank you. I didn't have my calendar up. Okay, that was unanimous. Any other updates, Mr. Allen?
I do have a brief manager's report, if you're ready for that, uh, Mayor.
Of course.
Have two items to cover. Uh, one, I always like to give some type of update on the current, uh, status of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, you probably know that the governor is expected to make an announcement this week as to whether the state will move into phase three on June twenty-sixth, when phase two retires, or if there ends up being some hybrid, um, between phase two and phase three. Um, unfortunately, as you probably have seen the last few days, the, the trends are upward in North Carolina and actually throughout much of the South in terms of new coronavirus, coronavirus cases, percentage of cases testing positive are, are increasing, as well as hospitalizations in North Carolina have been increasing. So I think the governor's in a difficult position. Um, and, and so it's, we're uncertain as to what he will be doing. Your staff continues to monitor that very closely, trying to figure out what, um, what may be happening. One thing that could very well happen is a relaxation, uh, further of rules for people in outdoor settings, and because of that, Parks and Recreation Director Hayden Kramer has been looking at that, he and his staff, to prepare to open up the town's ball fields and picnic shelters for reservations and so forth, um, if that occurs. So Hayden is, is watching that, and we should know this week what will be happening with that. Um, the other thing I'd mention is that since June first, uh, we've been operating with about fifty to sixty percent of personnel back in Town Hall, um, and, and at, uh, the Public Works facilities. Um, and then we anticipate by July first, we'll be back virtually at a hundred percent with maybe a couple of exceptions by July first, and that seems to have gone well. Um, our, your, your employees are, are wearing masks in all the public areas of the building. A, a lot of visitors to the building are wearing masks. People are being respectful of social distancing, so feel like we have a good situation at, um, Town Hall. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention is that, um, the Finance Director, Jim Wadewitz, he's continuing to monitor the town's financial situation, revenues and expenses for the year, and, and, you know, we, everything continues to look very good. Surprisingly, uh, Jim is estimating that, that we may be able to contribute from this year's budget as much as a million dollars more in additional fund balance in the general fund, which I think is, is excellent. And so we're very happy about that. Part of that reason is, of course, you know that, that I had frozen several positions because of the uncertainty with the pandemic, not knowing about revenues coming in and so forth, and of that million dollars, uh, almost a quarter million dollars is lapped salaries that have accumulated as a result of those frozen positions. Um, we are beginning to see some pressures in terms of workload, particularly in planning, public works. If we open the ball fields, um, back up, um, we are going to have some need of additional staffing, and so it, it's possible that I may be relaxing that hiring freeze partially, um, bringing back two or three or so of the permanent positions, maybe a couple more of the part-time positions, um, just so that we can handle the workload that's coming in. And I just wanted to let you know that I feel like with, with the town's strong financial position, uh, we can do that, that we're in a position to do that, so that, um, may be forthcoming sometime over the next few weeks to a month. Those are the only items I have, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Sure, do you have any questions for Ray?
I got a question.
Oh, Todd has a question. One second, Todd. Mr. Morse?
No, sir.
Mr. Head?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Barber, you're up.
I just wondering when you, um, unfreeze those positions, will they be posted, and when, and what timeframe did you, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it. What timeframe did you think those would be maybe unfrozen?
Um, a couple of them have, have already been posted previously, I think, Mr. Barber. Um, I'm not sure about that. If not, they'll be posted soon. In terms of filling them, probably sometime over the next two to four weeks would be my guess. And again, I'm only talking, looking right now at a couple of the full-time... looking right now at a couple of the full-time positions and a couple of the part-time positions is what I'm looking at most strongly. There will continue to be some full-time and part-time positions probably frozen.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Howe?
I just want to tell Ray, thank you for the good job that you're doing. Things running very smooth, I understand, and it's appreciated, and your input and your concern. We're just glad to have you aboard.
Thank you, Ms. Howe.
You're welcome.
Mr. McIntyre?
I have no questions, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ray. That brings us to Counsel's comments. Ms. Walter?
Uh, Mr. Head?
Well, I want to thank Ray and our staff for the work they've done through some unusual and I'm sure at times difficult times. To hear that we're, we're, we're finishing up the year with an extra $1 million is, is very gratifying and just shows the, the efforts that, that the team has put together. Want to thank Counsel and the Mayor for another good meeting, and I guess I don't have to say it by a drive home safe, except for a few that are in Town Hall, but enjoy the rest of your week.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Mr. Allen and your staff, you guys do a wonderful job. You know, I want to recognize the, the Public Works and also the engineering group for putting together the Stormwater visiting these people in town that had the problems there and coming, coming up with a plan to try and mitigate some of that. So that was really rapid response, good way to get back to the citizens because we want to make sure that these residents know exactly what's going on. So good job on that. Also, on the budget, you know, really, you and Jim, Ray and your team, you know, you guys putting the budget together, the budget's adopted tonight. There weren't any public comments or anything. We were able to keep taxes as, you know, as, at the current rate. So we do appreciate that. Counsel, it's a pleasure working with all of you. Mr. Mayor, just one point to you, sir. I know you, you battling some challenges here from a health standpoint, and, you know, we'll say a prayer for you, and we, we should do very best. We hopefully can see you continue to fight this and get well soon. If you need anything from us, please let us know. We'll be more than happy to assist in any way that we can, but we ask that you continue fighting and, and so that way you can beat this thing. Everybody, thank you very much tonight, and have a great day, or good evening, I should say.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, first off, is my thoughts and prayers to the Mayor on your recent diagnosis, thinking about you and praying for you. Also, would like to really say a shout out to the Mayor and the fellow Counsel for really going through and doing a, a great, physically responsible budget that was put together, and the staff, and Mr. Allen, and Mr. Wadowitz, and everyone really working hard and doing this and doing the right thing. And I know we got less revenues probably coming in down the road, and really, I think we put together a great budget that the citizens can be proud of. And, and other than that, I'd like to wish all the Fathers a Happy Father's Day here this past Sunday, and, and thank you for all the, what the good Fathers out there do. Thank you, and everybody have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
Yes, um, thank you for another well-presented Council meeting to the Town Manager and staff, and a lot of positive things happening. Everything that's been said tonight, I echo kudos, and I hope everyone has a safe week tonight.
Ms. Howe?
Just a ditto to what everybody said, and it's good to see that we all get along, and that's really important for us to move forward. And it's a pleasure working with you and being part of the team here. And I guess I say everybody have a safe ride home tonight. Thank you.
And Mary Alvarez?
All right, thank you. First and foremost, I want to, to the Counsel, it's a pleasure working with what is truly a professional group of individuals. You've handled the budget with the utmost of professionalism, without any petty differences, irrelevant arguing, which is a pleasant addition to this town's leadership. I admire all of you. Thank you, from a resident's standpoint. I ditto all the other Counsel members' responses. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Marcus, for your words of prayer and encouragement, and thank you to the Town of Indian Trail for being there for me. I'm very blessed. Everybody, oh, God bless. That's it. There's no closed session, from what I see, so I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Uh, that sounded like Mr. Morse, if that was correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Ms. Howe?
Approved.
And Mr. McIntyre?
Approve, sir.
The motion to adjourn has been approved unanimously. Everybody have a safe and blessed evening, and be careful out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night, good night, all.